Is to call the role. So Shelley, would you mind doing that first, please?
Yes. Please remember to unmute yourself to answer the attendance. Dan Hartley, Jerry Lisca,
Here.
Norman Divers,
Present.
Allison Cunningham, Chairman Dixon,
Here.
Matt Hart. Okay. I thought I saw Matt on here. Let's see. I see. Hey, Matt. I don't hear you, but I do see you. Okay. Uh, great. Nick Vesely. Again, I don't. And Christine Green.
Here.
Right. So I'm gonna just double check a couple. I see some names on here. If your sound is not working, you can always send a message. Nick Vesely. Okay, I think I heard him. Great. Matt Hart. I see his name. Oh, I see. And then I see Dan is on, sent a note that said, Dan Hartley is on. He sent it. It's not working. Allison Cunningham.
Hey.
Yes.
Sorry.
Missed all Matt. So with that, Mr. Chairman, it appears all board members are in attendance this evening.
Thank you, Shelley. I would, I'd like to remind everyone that we are live streaming through the city's YouTube station and remind board members and staff to, please remember to announce your name. You know, if you're making a motion or a question, because a lot of times we can't see who is there. I would ask you to please, if you're not talking, try to keep it on mute so we can try to keep the background noise to a minimum. There's, there's one thing that we want to do before we get started. Started, I'd like to introduce, we have two new board members that are joining us this evening when we are at full staff. Again, we've, we've been without a full slate of members for several months here. And the new members that were sworn in earlier today, Norman Divers and Christine Green, I welcome both of you. And I would like to start with Christine. If each one of you would just take a moment to tell us a little bit about yourself and what led you to this, to join this committee. So Christine, if you would please start.
Thank you, Chairman Dixon. I am very excited to be a part of the Planning and Zoning Board. My initial reason for wanting to join is I've been wanting to get involved with the city of Belmont for a while, just to see how things are handled and things are run. I've come to a few city council meetings and it's a very business, very busy business. So planning and zoning kind of seemed like a great place to start with understanding how we maintain historical charm of the town versus a development of how we bring in new people and continue on with growth. So it just kind of seemed like a fun thing to do and an interesting way to get involved. I currently work for a law firm in Uptown and the administrative coordinator there. So I'm very interested to see how this goes. And of course, I'm brand new to this type of thing, so I won't be doing a lot of speaking initially. I plan on doing a lot more listening and learning. So I'm very excited to be here. So thank you.
Thank you. And welcome aboard. Norman.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Norman Divers. I am a civil and environmental engineer and a licensed contractor in 15 states. And I have been living in Belmont for the last 10 years. And I am, I too am excited for the opportunity to serve. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you as well as the Belmont City staff to try and make a difference. Look forward to getting an opportunity to meet you, meet each one of you in person as our events will allow. And thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. I, I won't let you know, both of you know, that, you know, this is a fairly young board, you know? And so everybody's been in the position that you're in. And so it's, there's not a dumb question. There's a lot of, you know, it's a lot of code out there, but we do have a great city staff that is more than willing and able to sit down and help us work through this. So the first thing on the, is, is to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. So I would look for a motion to do so.
So.
No motion to set it?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second? Dan? There's been a motion, can you discuss? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So the agenda is set for this evening. Is the adoption of the minutes from our meeting in July. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to read through the meeting, the minutes from that last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Allison, I approve. Set to approve.
The first, is there a second? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Second.
Do we get the, who got the second? The city staff get that, I would say, and then write who got the second.
Um, I did not. If someone could just clarify that for me.
Dan, in the second.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Hearing none of the minutes, then approved. I'm hearing a lot of background noise. I don't know if you could try to put it on mute if you possibly can. There are, there are two public items this evening and the public has the ability to ask questions through two channels. One of them, there is a, there's a link up here that the mouse is showing. And the other option is to text And so we would ask that, that the public do this during the, during the presentation. They can do it now, but during the presentation of each one of the two items. You know, we have an item that deals with the, the tree ordinance and a, another item on the agenda for this evening that deals with the accessory structures. So please, I would ask the public or anyone listening that has a question to, to get in touch with the, with the staff by either one of these two, two means. And the staff will read the question at the appropriate time after the questions have been sent in. Any questions? If not, so the first item on the agenda, and I am trying to get there. Bear with me just a minute. I need to pull up my agenda.
I'll be glad to read it.
If you don't mind, Shelley.
Yes. This is text amendment 2020-03. This is a tree preservation and landscaping text amendment. This is request to amend chapter 11 of the Land Development Code to strengthen and clarify the city's landscaping and tree preservation regulations. And my name is Shelley DeHart. I'm the director for the city and I am the project planner on this case.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start with some background. Can everyone hear me okay? Just a thumbs up. Great. So the city of Belmont adopted its first tree preservation ordinance in 2009. Now, this ordinance is still in place and it focuses on a single-family residential development. The tree preservation regulations target low-density residential development. That is three dwelling units and under. So our current ordinance says that if you're going to develop a residential community, a low-density residential community, you're required to save 25% of the existing tree canopy on the site. So it is based on existing canopy on the site and not on the, the project size as a whole. So this results in a very varied tree application as far as tree safe areas. It varies from project to project. Now, these existing tree preservation regulations, coupled with our yard and street tree requirement, usually yields between 25 and 35% tree canopy back in the community. Our existing ordinance has no requirements for tree preservation as it relates to commercial, civic, such as a school or a church or industrial uses. And it has very minimal requirements for medium and high-density residential. There are some regulations that indicate that if you have steep slopes or in stream buffers, you should not remove the trees. Most developers do not remove trees in that, in that area. So if you, as you are all well aware, the city has experienced a lot of growth. With the implementation of our existing ordinance to 2009, it has given us the opportunity to see the results of this implementation. And we have lost a lot of tree canopy. So the evidence is pointed in the direction that the city regulations could do more and should do more to preserve tree canopy. So the Environmental Sustainability Board partnered up with staff and we took the issue to the city council in a workshop indicating that there was the need to strengthen the city's tree preservation regulations. The city council did provide us direction to go ahead and update the ordinance. Their timing was perfect in that the state had just announced that the North Carolina Urban and Community Forest Grant was available for monies to support that type of task. The city did apply and did receive monies for this project. So we started by creating a team. We hired the Davy Resource Group. They are a leader in the industry of preservation of urban and community tree canopies. We established a steering committee made up of community volunteers with diverse backgrounds and interests in tree preservation and development. So I want to take a moment to thank the steering committee members. We had two members, Belmont's Environmental Sustainability Board, that was Sharon Johnston and Rob Wilite. We had Madeline Keter from Rebic. They represent the real estate and building industry. From our own planning board, we had Nick Vesely and Gerald Lisca. We also had Dave Bogarty from Gaston County, North Carolina Extension. He's the director there, as well as Steve Martnow, who is in the city's Public Works Department that is, that supervises street tree maintenance. So we put together this team to help lead us. We also used the Environmental Sustainability Board and the planning board for just general feedback. We would present a status update and take any comments that our two boards had to incorporate and strengthen the ordinance. So although the project initially kicked off internally in late 2019, it really started publicly in January of this year. Now, the draft you are about to review was prepared with a lot of research, stakeholder input in the form of interviews, multiple meetings, some onsite, onsite site visits, and also a community survey. So I'm going to jump right in. So at the initial meeting with the steering committee, we developed a working vision for this project. And that is, the intent of this ordinance update is to preserve, protect, and proliferate the community forests to the greatest extent possible, while simultaneously encouraging, not impeding, growth and development. So that, that is where we started when we were developing these regulations. Now, what we heard from stakeholders, the community and the steering committee is Belmont has, has a high level of importance placed on individual property rights. We heard a lot of comments related to the shock of new development. You could drive up South Point Road. You've done that for 10 years, saw a nice wooded lot, and the next day, everything's gone. There was many comments related to the outcomes of our ordinance implication. Implementation was not, they were not meeting expectations. And also, we have a very unique, unique development challenges in Belmont. We, we are in the watershed. We're on a peninsula. And it makes it difficult for development. We also had a community survey. On the survey, it was pushed out on social media early on. Out of 121 responses, about 80% should, indicated that Belmont should regulate tree protection. The community as a whole recognized the importance of trees as an asset in Belmont. So based on the initial interviews, again, site visits, research, review of our existing ordinance and ordinances from other municipality, we found that the areas requiring attention in our ordinance were related to language and formatting, knowledge of pre-development site conditions, tree safe area requirements, landscape requirements, and tree protection during development. So out of those areas, the key changes that you will, that are in your pocket and you'll hear about tonight, are, we expanded and updated definitions. We expanded the tree safe requirements to apply to different land use development types. We included some exemptions to avoid instituting a burden or individual property owner developments. We identified a clear process and associated timing. This was something that is, that is missing in our current ordinance. And we clarified landscaping requirements and modified provisions with an eye towards species diversity and keeping, and making sure that we get the right tree planted in the right place. So I'm going to go a little deeper into each one of these areas. So with regard to definitions, that was pretty simple. We rearranged the chapters and brought the definitions to the beginning of the chapter. We had to add definitions to support new language and regulations. And then we expanded definitions to clarify and bring information up to current professional standards. With regard to tree safe area requirements, again, our focus was on ensuring that all developments contribute to our tree canopy in, with regard to preservation. So we developed a tiered system based on development type. Then we identified if the mitigation, the tree safe areas, we call it TSA, Tree Safe Area, needed to be done onsite, or is there the ability to do some off-site mitigation? So I'll start with single-family residential development. We've changed the tree safe area not to what the existing canopy is onsite, but we're using the total gross acreage of the development site. That is the way we calculate density. So we felt that should be the same way we calculate your tree safe area requirement. So for single-family residential, we are requiring 20% of the gross acres to be dedicated to tree safe area. The calculation method is onsite is required. So all of that 20% is required to be taken care of onsite. If there's, if there is not enough existing canopy, the development can plant additional canopy to make up that full 20%. For multifamily, traditional neighborhood development, or mixed-use development, 15% of the gross acres needs to be set aside in TSA. You primarily, it should be onsite. However, there is the ability for some off-site mitigation. It is restricted, however, and I will get into that in just a minute. For general, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses, such as schools or churches, the TSA area is 10% of the gross area. Again, onsite preservation is required. However, there is the ability for some off-site mitigation. Then we had to actually add a additional category for the historic downtown Main Street area. So we have a historic downtown. Our buildings, existing buildings bill the, the properties. They're very small and most of the trees on the lots are gone. So although we are requiring 5%, and if there are existing trees, we'd want the 5% maintained onsite. However, off-site mitigation is permissible. So I'm gonna take a minute to further discuss off-site mitigation. So again, off-site mitigation is only permissible in three land use type developments. High-density residential, TND and mixed-use, general, commercial, industrial, institutional, and historic downtown and Main Street district. The two categories with the asterisk, the maximum off-site mitigation that can be used is 50% of the required area. So they cannot say, we're not going to save in any trees onsite and just do off-site mitigation. So it is limited in those two categories. We did not maintain that same requirement for the historic downtown Main Street. To fit in with our historic Main Street, most of the buildings need most of the buildings need to fill the complete parcel, but there is the ability for them to meet their 5% requirement through off-site mitigation. They could plant trees in Stowe Park and so forth. So what, how do we meet off-site mitigation? Well, there's two forms, payment in lieu or tree banking. I'll start with the easier one. Tree banking is where the city accepts either property with tree canopy on it, or they propose to plant trees in a city park or so forth, but the city has to agree to it. And the area needs to make up the difference that's required for their TSA area. Payment in lieu of is based on a percentage of the area, based on market value of the property as identified in Gaston County GIS. I'm going to show you an example. Hopefully, my math is correct on this. So I identified a undeveloped parcel of 344 acres and a half. I'm going to assume this is going to be a mixed-use development. Therefore, their required tree save area, TSA, is 15%. They would then be required to preserve over 51 acres as a tree save area. They are asking to utilize 50% of their TSA area as payment in lieu. So that would be 25 acres, 25.84 acres. According to Gaston County GIS, the market value is over $2 million. If I divide the parcel size with the market value, I get a dollar per acre amount. In this case, it resulted in $6,566 per acre. Then I multiply that per acre amount to the area that they are proposing to mitigate, and it would net a required payment of $169,000 to the city. So that is an example of how off-site mitigation payment in lieu of would work. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit more about what needs, what is considered a protected tree in our tree save area. So it's not just all canopy. We are specifically trying to identify and preserve our larger trees. So we've identified a protected tree as 10 inches. So you get credit for protecting a 10-inch diameter deciduous tree, a hardwood tree. That's 10 inches up to 18. At 18 inches, it's considered a significant tree. That can be either a deciduous or conifer, a pine. Then anything between 18 up to 36 would be considered a significant tree. At 36 inches in diameter, they would then be considered a heritage tree. Now, our current ordinance only protects trees. They call, in fact, our heritage tree in our current ordinance is 12 inches in diameter. So we've broken it up in these three different categories because we wanted to try to create an incentive for developers to save our larger trees. So we've created a credit multiplier to incentivize saving of the larger trees. So if you are protecting a 10-inch diameter tree, it's a one-for-one ratio. Significant tree, one to one and a half credit. And a heritage tree, you get double credit for preserving a heritage tree, which is 36 inches or greater. Now, something that, again, is missing in our current ordinance, it's just not the diameter tree. The health of the tree is also evaluated, which I will get to in just a few minutes. So the process requires an inventory that identifies the species, the diameter, and the health of the tree. So that falls into our process and timing. So all projects will start with a tree inventory. Again, the tree inventory needs to be prepared at the sketch plan phase. So that's at the very beginning, when they're still working out an overall design layout for a community. The tree inventory identifies the species, the diameter, and the health of the tree. Then, as the project progresses towards a schematic plan, the design is, is pretty much locked in because they then have to submit a schematic plan with a tree protection plan. That's where they're identifying. They do all the calculations to prove to the city that they are meeting their tree save area requirement, whether it's 20%, 15%, or so forth. Now, that, again, is required at a schematic plan phase. That's typically associated with the project that comes before the planning board and city council, a discretionary project. If we have a project by right, like a small commercial building, they would still be required to comply, but they would have their tree protection plan in the construction plans. So it either falls by, by right, it would be in the construction plans. If it's a discretionary that goes before a board, it would, that would take place in the schematic plan. So once they get to that second stage, it will go before boards and ultimately be approved by the city council. So the tree planting plan comes into play if a community has a tree save area that they cannot meet by simply existing tree preservations. They need to supplement and plant additional trees to make up their percentage. That would come in with the construction plans. So that is the timing for that plan. But on each stage, the tree inventory, tree protection plan, and eventually, the tree planting plan follows each stage and each plan. So we have all the information while we're conducting review. Now, with this, with these new regulations, we also instituted some exemptions. We really felt like there's some certain types of developments should be exempt that could cause a hardship for an individual property owner or smaller development. And they fall under exempt subdivisions, and those are defined by the North Carolina general statutes. They're typically recombinations or lot line adjustments and so forth. Proposed changes in use with no expansion. Residential additions or upsets. We thought it would be overly burdensome if we would require a property owner wanting to add an addition on their home to go out and hire a professional to do the inventory and the tree protection plan and so forth. Non-residential expansions, excuse me, less than 25% if they're existing building or parking lot additions. Conventional rezones, those are typically changing from one zoning classification to another with no proposed development. So there would be no need to have a tree inventory done at that time. Residential infill, those are existing lots where someone is proposing to build a home on an existing lot. And then there are some state law exemptions that are tied to timbering, that the state prohibits tree preservation ordinances on certain type of timbering actions. So although this ordinance does exempt some of what we believe are real smaller type of developments, it does not exempt them from the landscaping requirement. So if somebody's building a single-family home, they will still have to, to plant the required yard trees and so forth. And the same with a commercial development. They need to provide shade trees in the parking lot. So we will still get tree canopy. There's just no preservation component. Now, under the landscaping section, we were really trying to clarify some of our buffer requirements. And so we've gone through them, added language, modified, tried to clarify statements. We also took a long, hard look at adjusting our required yard tree and street tree requirements. What we found is, we were requiring large, the planting of very large trees, such as an oak, as a street tree, and a large yard tree on a property that may have, maybe had a 20-foot front yard setback. So although they fit fine now, in the future, when they start growing, we find that the neighborhood comes back and they want to take some of these trees out because they are too close to the building, similar to the picture you see here. They're too close to the building or each other. So we really focused on ensuring that we had the right tree in the right place. We paid special attention to species size, diversity, and location. We needed to clarify public street tree maintenance responsibilities. So that's something the state had indicated our previous ordinance was lacking. So we had to clarify who's responsible for maintaining the street trees. It could be a homeowners association or even property owners. It could be the city. Or in commercial situations, it may be, it may be the business management company that maintains the trees. But we did identify that within the ordinance. And then we also needed to clarify maintenance and safety standards within the ordinance. So over the past nine months, we've done a lot of work with a lot of input. The summary of the changes, again, are, we expanded and updated definitions. We expanded the tree save requirements to apply to different land use developments. We did include exemptions to avoid instituting a burden for individual property owners. We identified a clear process and associated timing for that process. And we also clarified landscaping requirements and modified provisions with the eye towards species diversity and getting the right tree in the right place. So it's staff's opinion that this request is reasonable and consistent with Goal 7, the environment of the adopted comprehensive land use plan, because it strengthens and expands tree protection and landscape regulations to protect the natural environment of Belmont, and it supports the city's efforts to preserve its critical public asset of tree canopy while working in partnership with the development community for sustainable growth. So with that, we recommend the planning board transmit a recommendation to approve. I will let you know that the state is currently still reviewing the draft that you're hearing tonight. So we are expecting comments back from them. And the public comment period is still open until, until September 2nd. And we will review the comments. And if modifications are needed, we will incorporate those prior to the item being heard by the city council. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Again, if there are members of the public that have questions that they would like to ask on this tree preservation ordinance update, you can go to the website you see on the screen here, enter event code 5119, type in your question, or you can text message us at 805-303-5642. And I'll check with our IT personnel to see if we have any questions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions this board has at this time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Norman Diamond. May I ask some questions, please?
Hey, is this Matt?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Davy Research did the study.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you type in, text mess, or send in a message? And I'll look at the question?
Hello, this is Norman. May I ask some questions, please?
Yes, okay. Okay, so Matt, it looks like your question says, does Davy have any longer-term review of the ordinance after their work is complete? So let me ask for clarification. Do you mean in the form of monitoring? It's the ordinance, it's implementation outcome? How well is it doing? Yes, okay, so, okay, let's see. How well is it doing? So Matt, to answer your question, no. What we can do is, is make it part of the comprehensive land use plan annual review that the, this ordinance be reviewed by the city's Environmental Sustainability Board. And we will try to take a couple of test cases. It may take a while before they, we see some outcome. But yes, we can incorporate something like that as a requirement of this approval. So we can do that. I'm looking here, and board member divers. How is the TSA calculated? Is it based on tree canopy at a certain age or based on the existing condition? Great question. So the tree save area, again, we start with a certain percentage for the development. But the trees are, the tree save area is calculated based on the diameter at, first highest, actually, the critical root zone area. And that is based on the diameter of the tree. There's a requirement of 12 inches or one foot for every one inch diameter of the tree. So it is a very, not too complicated, but the tree save area, the tree inventory is, that is why it's required to be done by a professional that assesses the tree diameter, the health of the tree, the species. Then that will tell them if it can be calculated towards the tree save area. And then the measurement towards that 15% is based on the critical root zone. So it's not based on age. It's more on the health of the tree and the diameter of the tree and the critical root zone. Okay, so we have, someone sent in a, a great question that I, I can't think off the top. But the question is, I may have missed this, but what types of trees usually thrive in our area? And I'm sorry, I don't have my consultant here, but we do have a And I'm sorry, I don't have my consultant here, but we do have a, a tree species list that's part of this project that identifies the trees that thrive in our areas. There's certain types of oaks and, and maples and so forth. And again, we would look at the tree save area, the tree, any proposed planting and that tree species needs to be on the list. Oh, I'm getting some great, okay. Can street trees be counted towards the tree save area? The answer to that is no. We want any yard trees and street trees to be above and beyond the required tree save area. So the answer to that is no. Okay. It says that, again, board member divers, says residential infill could remove some significant mature trees depending on the intended density sought in the infill development. We may need to consider TSA requirements for residential infill. Okay. So what I'll share with that, so again, if somebody's doing a minor subdivision and infill, they will be subject to the tree save requirements. A major subdivision, when I use the term residential infill, it's related to somebody who has an existing lot that wants to build a home on their existing lot. We could, if the board wanted to go in this direction, so we could say, there is a requirement that says if there's a heritage tree on the property, then they, they would need to get a tree removal permit if they're proposing to remove it. We could make that apply, but based on your question, and Nick Vesely just noted that is a single home developed on a existing lot would, as written, be exempt from any tree requirement. So that's really up to the board if you want to keep that as an exemption or if you want to open it up just for consideration of removal of, say, a heritage tree, they have to get a permit.
Is that on a single lot?
Yes. Yes, sir. So that, that infill is considered if you have an existing lot and someone's proposing to build a new home on it. We thought it'd be overburdened some for someone to have to do the inventory and calculations. What we find in most cases on existing lots, there's really more minimal clearing. It's the smaller subdivisions and the, that are occurring that are sort of clear cutting the lots and the tree preservation ordinance would apply.
Shelley, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
My, my concern is if, if a developer or a builder comes in and buys an existing home or an existing lot, vacant lot in a neighborhood or what have you, and we have some significant trees, so it's a mature subdivision. Or, for example, the, the home that was just recently torn down on, down the street from where the, those people places is, and there's a mature tree on there or there's a heritage tree that, that's out there. Are we wanting to be so, so protect, provide such a protection that those larger diameter trees that have been around for hundreds of years should be protected and considered when they go back to rebuild a home on that lot?
Yeah.
I mean, well, if, if the intent is to save our mature and heritage trees and, and maintain our street canopy or our tree canopy, excuse me, then I think that's something that the board should consider.
Well, staff is definitely open to that option that we could write something in if it's, if there's a heritage tree on the lot. They would need to, they'd need to identify it. They would need to identify the health of it as well. Not all older trees, I've seen some that are sort of in bad shape, although they're very large. They could apply for a permit. But generally, when we get someone walking through the door, and I'm just trying to think about implementation, so if somebody comes in and they're filing to build one home on existing lot, the only thing on their survey typically, they don't show any trees, they show setbacks, the footprint of the proposed house, and that's about it. So in the property line, so if we wanted to go in that direction, we could add on the application, you know, are there the heritage trees, define it 36 inches in diameter or larger on the property, make that a question on the zoning permit application. If so, they need to be identified on the site plan. We would then go out and we inspect all new single-family development, pre-development. So we would go out and that could be part of our inspection on the infill situation. And we could note if there's a significant tree and then explore options for preserving that tree and require they get a permit. But that's the direction of the board. So that is something I think we could implement.
Shelley, this is Nick. I just want to weigh in on that real quick. First of all, I just want to say that I'd be against any kind of individual property owner being subject to the ordinance. And I just want to offer up a quick clarification. If you had a subdivision that had a tree save area as part of the subdivision, that would not be even allowable on the individual lots. It would only be allowable in a common open space area. So it's kind of a, a non-issue for future use for those areas. They become platted areas and they're not, they can't be touched by anyone in the future, even if the lot gets sold. Just to clarify that.
Right. I think he was just speaking to infill situations.
I was just wanting to offer the conversation. I mean, how, how significantly do we want to make this tree save requirement across the board? We do have large heritage trees that exist on our existing lots throughout, throughout the city. And if we're going to want to save the tree canopy across the city, then it should, then we should discuss that. It's not an infringement on anyone's property rights. It's a, it's simply a requirement that the city of Belmont would be looking for, looking to maintain. But that's all I have to say.
So Shelley, again, how, how would that work? I mean, if we, the particular lot there on, on Central that has a huge tree there, how would, how would that, walk us through that if we wanted to make a stipulation where that tree could not be?
Well, within, so within the ordinance, there is a provision that if someone wants to remove a heritage tree, they have to apply for a permit and it has to meet these certain criteria. Now, if that tree happens to be in the building envelope, you know, it, it comes to, okay, well, that tree is probably going to be removed, but we could ask mitigation. Well, for that one removal, we want planting of, you know, three large tree species in an area that makes sense on the lot. So again, the only thing I can think of on, in this case, so Nick is right that there are developments out there, big subdivisions, and I, I think someone mentioned reflection point. We'd have to see if they were subject to a tree ordinance. So once a subdivision is approved, open space is supposed to be required up front, tree save area is supposed to be required up front. And then you really do not apply additional requirements if they were subject to some provisions with the development as a whole. Now, again, these individual infill lots where some, some people are buying up lots, clearing the lot, clearing the existing home, there could be a significant tree on, or two on the property. We could make it part of the application that they identify it. We could put it on our checklist for our inspectors when they go out to look at the pre-construction site to note if there are any large trees. If there are some larger trees, heritage trees, that maybe are not going to be removed, we can make sure that they have good tree protection around them to preserve them if they're out of the building envelope. But if it comes into conflict between a individual property owner wanting to build a house on their lot and we're saying, no, you have this one big tree, I think that could be problematic. I mean, we, we could always encourage interesting design, but at, at the end of the day, we have standard setbacks and other requirements that may prevent that tree in the middle of the building envelope from being preserved.
I guess the infill lots got other things they have to deal with, right? Because they have to be pretty close to the existing lot, existing houses and that type stuff too, that may push it back into the, to a tree.
So, yeah, if there's existing houses on it, I'm not too worried in, and again, we could put it on our punch list to take note of any heritage trees at the pre-construction to make sure they're well protected. So we, you know, we can, we can do that. Most, again, if it's a, even a two, three, if it's a subdivision, a very small, even a two-lot subdivision that is proposed, that is wooded, they would be subject to this requirement. Again, the infill is targeted on existing individual lots that could have a house on there or could be vacant to somebody who now wants to build a home. We're open to whichever direction you would like to, to go on this. Again, overall, we really tried to think about exemptions and when it should apply and so forth. And the result of that is on infills, it is one of the exemptions. But again, we can, this is our ordinance. We can, we can try the heritage tree permitting on infill lots and see how it works. And if it's problematic, we can bring it back to the board. Again, based on input, we will be examining the implementation of our code to determine, is it working? Are we losing heritage trees on infill lots? I mean, it can go in both directions as long as we keep on top of an annual review of the ordinance implementation.
Shelley, it seems to me, this is Walter, that it would be nice, you hate to keep the property owner from doing something on the individual lot, but there ought to be some incentive to try to save that tree.
Sure.
If possible, right? There's some give and take. And so maybe it's just not a, an open exemption, but maybe there's some way that the property owner and the city can work together to, to see what, if they identify, at least you can go out there and meet with them.
Yeah, this is Nick. Walter, I think that's a good idea. I think maybe a waiver on some kind of tree planting in exchange for saving a larger tree would be beneficial.
To me, that's a win-win, right? If you can.
Okay. So we do have, so in cases where there are even infill lots with large trees such as a heritage trees or even, you know, a good standard trees on there, we do have a landscape requirement. It could be just one front yard tree and one backyard tree or a couple in the rear and a couple in the front, depending on the lot size. And we do give credit, that's in our ordinance now and it's in our, this proposed ordinance, that we give credit. We give credit if there, if the lot is maintaining stands of trees or protected trees on the lot as, as a whole. We already give credit and do not require the yard tree if they're preserving, like you said, a heritage tree and so forth. So that's there. But we can definitely, so what I'm hearing is maybe expand that to at least require them to infill development for residential to identify, do you want just heritage trees or, or all the way down to 10 inches or the significant or just focus? We, we do have a permitting system for heritage trees because those are the ones that we're really trying to, that seem to be the first to go, that we're really trying to protect the 36-inch. So we have a permitting process. Again, we can require they identify any heritage trees on their property. We would inspect for any heritage trees, even if they forgot to identify it on their application, we'll still go out and look at the site. And if we can work with the property owner to preserve them, of course, we would give them credit on the required yard trees. But we could definitely implement something like that.
Shelley, I'd like to see the significant tree as well as the heritage. I mean, you could go up to, you know, 30 inches.
Significant.
I think that's a pretty good, especially on the infill lot, I think that's a pretty decent tree, you know? And then maybe you keep a couple significant ones in lieu of letting them get rid of a heritage tree if it works, you know? Some, some lead lines, perhaps.
Okay. So let me make sure. So the significant tree is 18 inches in diameter or larger? Is that what I'm hearing? That's what I heard from Walter.
I would say so, yes, ma'am.
Walter, could you ask for a raise of hands? I see everybody pretty much, except Norman, but ask if everybody agrees with that significant tree. Clarification, I say a couple thumbs up.
I lost my picture, my thing.
Okay.
Just a clarification, we're only talking about an exemption though, right? Not a requirement?
Yeah, exemption for single-family residential infill.
Right.
Okay. All right. Everybody's thumbs up. Okay, we will add that in. Very good. Are there any more questions? I'll check with our IT guru to see if anybody has sent in any additional questions.
Shelley, to be clear though, we're looking at the chapter 11, right? The changes that, that you put out there. So I don't know that we've gone through that. It's in the draft that you sent in the packet. But I don't know if the members want to go through that in any length at all. Are there any questions on that as well? You know, we've kind of looked at it at a high level and not necessarily the.
Right, right. Again, you know, Nick or Jerry, if you wanted to jump in there, you guys were on the steering committee. And I know Nick, you, you have, Nick has, well, both our members have been great in reviewing the draft for us over and over and over. And when I say we've looked at this and worked at this, we have. We've read a lot of different versions and, and tried to go over it, fine tune it every, every, with every update, so.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you a little, Matt.
I don't know what's wrong with my audio. But I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we, you know, I'm not making a motion to approve this tonight, but it sounds like there might be some additional tweaks that are happening with the state. What would the process be if a motion's made tonight to see the final draft before it's to council?
Well, we could send the draft to you the same time we send it to city council. And that would include any updates, but, yeah. I mean, we. that would include any updates, but, yeah, I mean, we could do that. We sent the draft to the steering committee, the state, when we sent it to the planning board for review. Again, the comment period ends on the second, so any modifications from the state or the public, or what we hear tonight, will be incorporated and heard by the City Council on the eighth. So, we can, we will get any modifications to you prior to that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the draft of Chapter 11 as presented.
With the modifications provided or entered into the record and making the required consistency findings as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So, here's a motion, is there a second for the adoption of Chapter 11 as pre-written?
Yeah, a second.
Yes, Nick.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any discussion among members of the board? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed likes, huh? Hearing none, it passes in that.
Great. Thank you.
And thanks to members of this board who served on, who took a look at it, a lot of effort, a lot of work behind the scenes.
So, Seth, may I get access to my PowerPoint or control to share again? Let me see. Oh, here we go. Maybe. Okay, thank you. I'm going to switch places with our project planner for the next case.
So, the next item on the item is TA 2019- and Melissa, I understand you were driving.
Yes. Good evening, Board, and welcome to our new members. Tonight, we have before you TA 2019.02. This is a staff-initiated text amendment to modernize our accessory structure regulations and to add provisions for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Well, the majority of this conversation tonight will focus on Chapter 3. There are other chapters being amended, such as a definition being added in Chapter 2, setback references in Chapter 4, some wording changes also in Chapter 4 to clarify text, and changes in 5 and 6 to support this amendment. So, there are other chapters being amended, but we will focus on Chapter 3 this evening. This amendment started off to incorporate and allow accessory dwelling unit provisions. We started this to implement the Comprehensive Land Use Plan goals, specifically to permit a range of residential housing types, encourage development of ADUs, and to allow our residents to age in place. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. To implement these goals, we have drafted these regulations to adopt as part of our zoning regulations or land development code. And through this process, we are also modernizing, unifying existing code language, and clarifying where needed. So, in Chapter 4 and Chapter 6 of our Comprehensive Land Use Plan, we have goals and specific action items. You see on the screen, we talk about this amendment and how we need to encourage and permit the development of accessory dwelling units in single-family neighborhoods, take steps to minimize any potential negative impacts to the neighborhood. This could allow more affordable housing options and housing types in Belmont, which could then also allow our residents to age in place by earning potential income. But as you can see, this amendment meets multiple goals of our comprehensive land use So, we currently allow rental cottages in Chapter 6. This amendment proposes to eliminate the outdated language that is found in that chapter and consolidate and move these regulations into Chapter 3. We started over a year ago with former staff and came up with a draft to present to our planning and zoning board. At that time, we did reach general consensus and agreement about the accessory dwelling unit provisions that we wanted to add. For example, the maximum square footage allowed for an ADU. But during that discussion, some other issues and concerns were identified. And as staff looked into that text, we realized that as it was, that draft was not meeting the goals as intended. So, from there, we formed a subcommittee, and we met and dove into those issues, performed extensive analysis and multiple drafts, and we reviewed and revised with current staff in our subcommittee, and are now before you tonight with this proposed amendment. So, we are talking about both general accessory structure regulations, and that's where we're going to focus on right now. We identified the needed changes that would unify regulations. And in doing this unification and consolidation out of Chapter 6 and into Chapter 3, we found we really needed to be intentional on how general accessory structures interacted with the ADUs. So, we have now incorporated changes that break down the size and number of structures allowed, and a tiered approach based on lot size, as well as the size of the principal structure. And then we've also made changes and clarifications to the text to address concerns and issues identified. How do we do this? And first, we clarified total square footage is how we are calculating our accessory structure allotment. The current and previous language talked about footprint of a structure, and that can lead to some unintended consequences regarding height. So, we have fixed that wording. We have adopted regulations and texts that unify provisions for carports, garages, ADUs, and in a combination thereof, to facilitate construction of these structures. And we've also addressed height concerns and related those to building setbacks. I want to take this moment to really thank not only our subcommittee, which is Jerry Lisca, Allison Cunningham, and our former planning and zoning board member, Patricia Franks, but also Shelley DeHart, our planning director, and our newest staff member, Tiffany Pharoah. We could not have gotten this far without everybody involved, and we would not have these great graphics to add if it weren't for Tiffany. So, thank you all. So, as we dive in to the changes regarding height, you will see that we have what we call the building envelope. This is a defined term comprised of the required building setbacks. What we have proposed would allow accessory structures inside the principal building area or building envelope to be the same maximum height as a principal structure. Outside of that building envelope, structures will be limited to one-story in height. For example, structures meeting the other setbacks as required would have to be limited to one-story in height unless otherwise granted by a special use permit. So, that proposed change eliminated some concerns we had about towering in tall buildings closer to the property line. Next, we made some changes and inserted a chart for size allowance, which you can find on page 43 of the agenda packet. A lot of these regulations start on page 40, this is on 43, the specific text. And as you can see, we have increased allowances for a number of buildings and increased allowance for square footage, larger than lot size. And we do offer a minor incentive if one of these structures is an accessory dwelling unit located on the property. Keep in mind that we still have other caps, you know, based on the lot size, heated square footage of the primary structure, and maximum lot coverage, for example. So, these are regulations as they apply to general accessory structures section of our ordinance. The next section is entitled Additional Regulations for Specific Accessory Structures and Uses. And that's where we get into the highlights from accessory dwelling unit regulations that we've added. And in this section, we have eliminated the outdated language regarding rental cottage and incorporated the changes into Chapter 3. This section starts off general with regulations that are required whether an ADU is attached or detached. The maximum size, for example, even if there's a, you know, 4,000-square-foot house, they want to build an attached ADU, it is still capped at 900 square feet, just like it is for detached ADUs. So, that's one example. Another example is off-street parking spaces required. And so, we've incorporated and added these provisions to facilitate ADU construction and to add additional protections as needed for adjacent property owners. Let's look at an attached accessory dwelling unit. This must meet the same location and height requirements as the principal structure and be located within the building envelope. And we do require that the entrance be on the side or the rear, and that is intended to help preserve the single-family look and feel of the neighborhood. For detached accessory dwelling units, as we mentioned, in the building envelope, it can be the same height maximum as the principal structure that's allowed for the principal structures. Outside of that area, they are limited in height. So, the height depends on the placement. We've also incorporated certain landscaping and screening in the form of a Type A buffer if that is needed, depending on site conditions, existing site conditions, to protect adjacent properties and minimize any negative, potential negative impact. As I mentioned, this proposed amendment really meets general goals of our Comprehensive Land Use Plan, specifically Goal Number 1, land use, by taking a balanced approach to land use and allowing a mix of choice in housing. Promotes Goal Number 2, and the economy by fostering a diversified tax base. We have to increase the supply of affordable housing stock in a way that allows our residents to age in place. Then we have specific action items that are found in Chapter 6 that specifically talk about implementation of regulations for allowing and encouraging accessory dwelling units, making moves that allow residents to age in place. And as you can see here, this meets multiple goals. So, at this time, if there's any public comment, we can answer any questions concerned that the comment that the public or the board may have. We ask you to confirm the plan consistency as discussed and recommend adoption to City Council. Great, thank you, Seth.
Now, I was asking some members that on this board that served on this team if they would mind just saying a few words, if they would like. Or not.
This is Jerry. I'll just say, when we went through it, it was really kind of looking at the balancing act of letting someone, you know, put an accessory dwelling on their property to fulfill their own purpose, but not encroach, whether it's parking, whether it's height of the building, on their neighbors. So, that was something that we really considered when writing the new language on that, was the balancing of, we didn't want to have some accessory dwelling unit dwarfing primary residents or, you know, encroaching on some of these lots that are closer together in
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, we took a long, hard look at that and looked at different options, and this is the one that makes the most sense and is smart that we can recommend at this time.
Yes, hi, this is Allison, and I also was on that subcommittee. And I would second that, that height was, to me, one of the biggest issues, and as well as parking, and making sure there was adequate parking for the units as well.
This is Matt. Is there any information about materiality of the structure as it relates to the existing structure on the property?
Are you asking if we have a certain setback from an existing structure?
No. So, if the existing home is vinyl siding, does accessory dwelling have to be vinyl siding? Or if it's stucco, the accessory has to be stucco, is materiality open-ended?
Well, we are limited in some form by state law requirements that prohibit us from making certain required design standards in a category of uses that accessory structures does fall under. So, while we are limited to some degree, we have made changes that prohibit, let me get the exact wording, but moving, like vans, for example, let me get my exact wording real quick. So, some of the most egregious metal, clearly not intended to be structures, we have incorporated wording for that. And we have included a provision that suggests that the materials be compatible.
Okay.
And we left that in there to encourage it, even though we can't technically require it.
Right, no, I appreciate that. I just, we just don't want to brick home and then, you know, I guess it's up to the landowner, but it would be unsightly, I would think, if there were different materials between those structures. But I understand where you're going with that, and I appreciate that.
Understood, thank you.
Are there any other? And so, we still did not, any comments from the public, is that correct? So, what's the word on this amendment?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The field of board, if somebody on the board is willing to make a motion to approve what was presented here this evening, or any more discussion on what's out there from the board. Is, is, is anyone willing to, to make a motion to approve with the consistencies findings that have been listed on page 38? If not, there's more discussion on what's been presented here.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
The motion? Is there a discussion? So is there a second, Matt? Is there any other further discussion on the, on this amendment? As presented, no? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, likes, uh? Hearing none, this amendment is approved as presented unanimously. Thank you, Melissa. And I thank you to the, to the members of this board who, who spent time on this as well. I know this came up, you know, a year or so ago on the planning and zoning board, and we figured out how, how tricky it is to get. And so I think there's a lot of work that's gone into this, and it's made a lot better product. So other business, the meeting in September.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'd be glad to touch on this. So the city council has workshops, besides the regular meeting, they have workshops mid-month, every month, and their next meeting is September 17 at Tech Works at 4:00 PM. Or, I'm sorry, let me, that's later. I'm sorry. The meeting is September, this is the upcoming planning board meeting, my apologies, on September 17. We will be meeting in person at Tech Works at 6:30 PM. We anticipate two conditional zoning cases, which is Caramont Hospital and the city's proposed park and recreation facility. So those are two cases tentatively on the next planning board agenda. I just wanted to make you aware of it. You can learn more about the, the projects now in between the, the meeting time at the city's website. If you look under our department, current projects, you will see there are project pages for both of these projects. Then we're asking, the city council has invited the planning board to a workshop to be held on September 21st, that is a Monday. So again, it's September 21st, Monday at 4:00 PM. That is an in-person meeting at Tech Works. They will be discussing setbacks and conditional zoning. So some city council members brought up their concern about our setbacks. They feel that in some locations and products, they, they believe it's too small. And so we want to have a general discussion, including the planning board, about building types and setbacks. And then we've had an ongoing discussion with the city council regarding by right development versus conditional zoning. So those are two items that the city council is inviting the planning board to join the discussion on. So that completes just some informational upcoming meetings.
Thank you, Shelley. I'm looking forward to in-person meeting. This is, this is not easy to do. It's a lot more of a struggle. But does anyone else have any other, any business, other business this evening? I would entertain a motion that we adjourn until September 17th at 6:30.
This is not hard to move.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.